I guess this is to hold our new badges. Now, we came in through the back. You have to wave your new badge in front of the black thing on the wall.
Or not.
Or not. It took me a few tries.
The security had to come and get me.
Good evening, buenas noches. We will begin with a pledge of allegiance and tonight, we would like to have Fitzgerald Elementary School's 5th grade student, who is going to Casero Middle School next year. Please help us, and that is Sarah Urbietta. Please lead us in the pledge.
Good evening, board members and audience. I would like to invite you to do the pledge of allegiance. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, where liberty and justice thrive.
Amen.
Thank you, board members, and have a wonderful evening.
You could say, "And the Dodgers take the field."
Next, we'll go on to, do we have a report out of closed session, Mr. Islam?
Mr. Montez, none.
At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn closed session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed session is adjourned. Now, there are some things we did not get an opportunity to finish. Does the board wish, is the board gonna wish to go back into closed session after the meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so just for public knowledge, we will be going back into closed session after this meeting concludes. Next, we go on to, and the time is 7:15. Next, we go on to adoption of tonight's agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the adoption of tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Preferential vote by student board member?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we go on to presentations. Tonight, we have none. That takes us directly to public comments, Section C. Item 1, comments from the floor. At this time, any person wishing to speak on any item not on the agenda will be granted three minutes. Mr. Islam, please take it away.
Thank you, President Montez. The first person, Mike Story, which is item not on the agenda.
Well, good evening, Board President, Vice President, and Board members. I'm Mike Story, City Administrator for the City of Rialto, and I'm coming here, I was here last time on something, but I'm here to talk about something I'm really proud of as a great partnership that we've been able to do with the school, some of our students. The Rialto Institute of Progress, it's an eight-week program that enhances community's knowledge of the workings of our local government. And some of the things that we study over this eight-week course is history of Rialto, understanding the bigger picture. They receive, the people that participate in this receive a presentation from the mayor, the council, our city clerk, city treasurer, finding out a little bit about the operation of the city. Then, we talk about development, planning, building, engineering, how things are built, where they go in the city. We have presentations and interaction with our fire department, our police department, Public Works, as well as our recreation department. And finally, we end up with our finances and going over what makes dollars and cents, sense in dollars and sense in common sense and how we spend it. But with that eight-week course, it's a great opportunity for the community to get involved. We've held three of these sessions over the last year. We've had 120 participants from our community, residents, business owners, commissioners, other stakeholders in our community. This last session, our third one we had, it was a special one because it was the first time that we invited high school students to attend. We sent letters and contacted the three high schools and requested them to recommend two students to be able to come and participate in it, to be able to be part of that program. And I know with the classes and testing and everything they went through as we completed it, I really appreciate the principals from Rialto, Eisenhower and Carter, who were able to recommend students, but they weren't able to be able to complete it. But the main thing is, we had two students from Rialto High School, and they're here tonight, Diane Galardo and Sarai Ferrer. They're there. Can you guys come on up here and give them a round of applause and stuff? They completed the eight-week course. They persevered and completed it with all the other things that they're involved in to be able to do that. And what I wanted to do is bring them before the board tonight to the community. Each of these students, as part of their completing of the program, they received a summer internship position at the City of Rialto, and they also were appointed by the mayor and city council to be student commissioners on commissions for the next year. Diane has chosen to intern in our recreation department and was selected by the mayor and city council to sit on our human relations commission. And Sarai has also chosen to work as an intern in our recreation department. They'll get the opportunity to work in community services down at the senior center, fitness center, and other opportunities to do that. And she, the council and the mayor appointed her to sit on our recreation commission for a one-year period. So I wanted to say that we look forward to continuing to do this. We do this twice a year and encourage them to become part of it because we can offer them. It's a great resume builder and opportunity to serve our community and being able to do that. So I'm gonna let these two young ladies give an opportunity to tell you why students should participate in this. So I'll let you guys go ahead. Diane?
And before you do that, I just would like to announce that the district is also giving some certificates of recognition. And perhaps Mr. Yala could give those.
What a great program. I have to first compliment the city for being proactive to facilitate and implement a program like this. When we start them young, I mean, this is working in our favor and we all benefit. And with that said, here's a certificate of recognition presented on Wednesday, June 3, 2015, by the Rialto Unified School District Board of Education, Tousari Ferrer. Congratulations. We also have a certificate of recognition presented by the Rialto Unified School District to Diane Galardo for excellence in student internship program. Congratulations.
Good evening. My name is Sara Garcia, and I'm here on the behalf of Assembly Member Cheryl Brown. And I too bring certificates from Assembly Member Brown. And it reads, "It is my privilege and honor to present this certificate of recognition for your outstanding skills as intern for the City of Rialto. I wish you to continue success in life and in all you do." Congratulations, Cheryl R. Brown, June, what is today, the 3rd? 3rd, 2015. And also, that was for Diane Galardo. And it reads the same, so it won't take up your time.
So I'm gonna go ahead and let the young ladies tell a little bit about why it's important to participate and what this can mean to them to be able to, not only for an internship or appointment to a commission, but what really they can get out of it to learn about the city.
Okay, well, I found this a great opportunity to understand how the city works and where the money actually goes. And I know some people complain, like, why is the city just like taking our money and not doing anything? But now I understand, it's all distributed fairly evenly. Like, we need to be able to fix all the streets and all the new buildings that are being created. So it's pretty interesting finding out and finding out about where the money goes to. We also found out the things that the programs do for like the community, the community programs do, to like all the events, social events that we do, to like Halloween or sporting events for people to work out. And it's all pretty cool. And it's just a great opportunity to understand what happens in the city of Rialto, and it's a very interesting place. And I enjoyed being there.
Okay, well, my name is Sarai, and I come from Rialto High School. When I heard about the program and I was recommended for the program, I thought about it, like, what a great opportunity for myself, because it's always been of me, like, you know, what's going on in the city around me? Where does everything go? You know? And so, one thing I really found valuable out of it was truly understanding our city, like, what goes on, where the money goes, how it's distributed, and why, more and most importantly. Also, specifically for my commission, I did it because I wanted to focus on the community. For, as myself, I find it important that we should all, like, we're a community, so we should all work together and try to make it a better place. So that's really, like, I found it really helpful for any, like, future students, I would like to do it. It would really help open your mind to, like, okay, this is going on. I could contribute in this, I can get involved in that. And I just found it really valuable to learn more about my city and what I could do in the future.
And like I said, we'll be offering up another class of this in September. There's some of the information's available on our website, as well as in the Progress Magazine that you receive in the mail. And if it becomes more successful, we're also be able, hopefully be able to work with the district and the staff to be able to develop one, not just where anyone can come, but one that'll be more specific just for students to be able to do that and bring it on a Saturday or some, something to be able to do that. So thank you for giving us the opportunity to have some of the bright, shining stars that are gonna be the leaders of the future, like Board Member Yala mentioned, is if we gotta turn it over to them at some point in time, you know, my hair gets gray and I lose more hair and stuff, we're gonna need to turn it over to them and their responsibility. And if they know going in, it just gives them that much more of a heads-up understanding what we're doing. But thank you very much for the opportunity to work with your students.
Thank you, Mr. Story.
Next, Russell Silva.
Good evening, board members, administration and viewing audience. My name is Russell Silva. You know, this podium is a fine piece of furniture that's handcrafted, and then it was set in this place of distinction to allow members of my, of the community such as myself, to come forward and respectfully address the board with our accolades, our concerns, our opinions, and our gripes. Under Section 54954.3A of the Brown Act, every agenda of a regular board meeting, it's supposed to require an opportunity for publics to come and address the legislative body. This board also on top of that asks that you fill out a slip to be able to have time to do that. And President Montez, you've even gone so far as to, at the end of the comments, ask people in the, in the public if they have additional comments without the need of a slip, they can come up and make comments. But in the last board meeting of May 20th, you said, "The board has heard enough comments on a particular item," and you kept, in order to keep the meeting short, you decided not the board to stop the public comments. You didn't even know what I was gonna talk about, much less what the other people behind me were going to talk about. You simply made an assumption, and then you made that decision. Under Section 54954.3C of the Brown Act, it says, "The legislative body of a local agency shall not prohibit criticism of policies, procedures, programs, or services of the agency." You violated that. Board Member Martinez even went so far as to request that the board vote to see if they wanted to continue comments. But then, I heard out of you in a very stirred manner that I thought I would never hear here, and that was that you were board president, and you shut him down. I'm not sure, but I think under Robert's Rules of Order, once a question is brought to the board by a member of the board, it needs to be addressed, and you failed to do that as well. So because we didn't get the opportunity to hear the opinion of the other board members, it has to be my assumption that it was you that didn't want to hear anymore on the, on the subject, not the rest of the board. As a person who comes up here and stands at this podium, I'm afforded three minutes. At the end of the board meeting, when board members make their comments, they're given unlimited time. So I sit there and I listen to everything you have to say, because I know you have a full agenda with many sites to visit and other district activities to do. And for the most part, a lot of it is very interesting. However, over the last 12 months, prior to your reelection, I've seen a lot of changes in you. You have used your position on the board, and especially the end of the meeting where comments are allowed, to address issues that tend to favor or benefit your agenda, as well as the agendas of people that support you. So I thought that being elected as a member of the Board of Education was an honor. I guess I was too naive to believe that that honor can be trumped by politics. I always thought it was about, how, you said it before in the past, that it was about the students. Or was that just another statement to gain, to have political favor?
I just would like to say that I apologize to Mr. Silva that he feels that way. He did not turn in a speaker slip like he usually does. And I did take it upon myself to end public comment. We were already past it. And at that point, people were running up to the podium without even being recognized. And I took the initiative, it was a long board meeting, to stop public comment after we were already trying to get past it. As a matter of fact, we were already going to union comment time. But for the interest of just making it more uniform, I think it would be prudent to just make it even for everyone and just allow people to turn in slips up until we're past public comment. Once we're past public comment, I know where anyone else should authorize anyone else to come up and speak after we're past the agenda item. But I don't see anything wrong with anyone coming up to speak during that time, as long as they turn in a slip during the time that we're on that agenda item. As far as elections, you know, I understand you ran for school board, and it's nobody's fault whether you got on this board or not, but I have to do-
Point of order, President Montez? Only because we actually, our protocol is that we don't have to respond to public comment, just to listen to be the ears to listen. So I would advise as our board and our organization that we do that.
And I understand that, Ms. Walker, but the point of order is that we have, I have the right to respond if I want to, and I choose to exercise that right to respond. I'm not gonna sit here and let someone come up and pigeonhole me without, without giving an explanation for my-
Point of order.
Mr. Martinez, I have the floor. Could you please wait to be recognized?
Robert's Rules requires point of order to be recognized immediately.
And I did recognize Ms. Walker's point of order.
And there is another point of order.
Okay, but I'm, I have the floor, Mr. Martinez. And if you want, you, could you let me finish before you interrupt me, and then I give you the floor?
Point of order can be called at any time.
I understand that, but I'm asking you to please respect that I have the floor.
I respect that you are again violating Robert's Rules of Order.
And how is that?
Read it.
Mr. Martinez, you could explain to us if I'm violating the point of order.
You weren't listening when I explained it twice.
No. I just wanna say that we have a right to respond. It's not, it's not a requirement. And I chose to respond. Now, Mr. Martinez, you, you want, did you wanna say something?
I'll reserve that. I'm just, I would not respond kindly right now.
I think we need to move on with the next.
Yeah, let's move on to the next speaker, please.
Thank you. Armida Everett. Is she right, your last name?
Yes.
Thank you.
Armida Everett. Thank you, board members. I have a concern of, oh, give me a glass. I am concerned about my fellow coworker and her situation over a meal ticket. I had mentioned the issue to a board member, and he advised me to go through the proper channels and bring the matter to our superintendent. I took his direction and went to speak with our superintendent. However, he had no direction, solution, or answer. I felt he did not want to get involved. As he stated, I am going to have to leave it in the board's hands. Our department has not yet been, are, not yet been told formally that this practice of meal tickets is not allowed. I would also like to say, we are like a family here at Rialto Unified School District. Thank you.
Carol Arbet.
Good evening. I'm Carol Arbet. I'm here representing the transportation department's school bus drivers. We have several issues and complaints, but we can't go through all of them. We've had turnover in management in the last three to four years, and we have yet to have a handbook, a policy and procedure manual. We've implemented several different things throughout the years verbally that have not been in place, written down in the book. None of those are recognized. Anything that the driver says is not recognized. It's as if we're divided between office staff and management drivers. The drivers have stated that we've made, we do things a certain way, we had a certain protocol, which has not been recognized as well. That we put a committee together to get the roles and regulations, the policy and procedures implemented, that has not been done. It's been, it's, we started this several years ago, and it's still continuing to go on. What, the problem is, we feel that there is a lot of division, unfair treatment, strong arm hold of, with, using our equipment in our buses. We have cameras that are there for student management, for incident reports, for school bus accidents. They're being pulled to listen to personal conversations between anyone on the bus or on the phone, and being, people are being pulled in, questioned about these conversations or what was said, and being told, in other words, to back off of different situations. So it kind of bullied. And so there's, there's a lot of problems in our department, and we really, we need to get it resolved. We need to be united. Transportation, we are school bus drivers. We are the department. There wouldn't be management, there would not be office staff without us. So in order to have a good department, we need communication, and we need to work together as one. We cannot be divided in that department. And the reason that this is such a bigger issue is that if you don't understand transportation, which is its own entity, it's not ran like any other department, it's completely different. And seniority also has not been recognized. And we work hard for our, sorry, for our seniority. We worked many years, and things are just not going right. None of the roles that are, yes, it's been unprofessional, you know, unfair treatment, singling out people, favoritism. So we would ask that you would look into this matter for us, and thank you. Have a good evening.
Paula Bailey.
Good evening, board members and viewing audience. I actually have two slips in there.
Yes, you have two.
Okay. My first slip is, I am concerned about how the district is addressing the high turnover in the special education department, specifically the instructional aides. I know I sent all of you an email, the numbers. If you look again at the agenda today, a majority of those who have resigned are from what department? When you don't have instructional aides, whatever it is that we need to do to address this, that means, does the teacher get the support they need? Does the students get the support they need? Because no matter how hard you try to get that sub or coverage, it may not happen. I know my child has came home and said, "No, we only had one today, and I didn't get time to do this or this." So the kids do suffer. I don't know how we can look at it and make this better, but it's sad when, you guys have seen the numbers, more than 50% of the people who left in this school year have been from special ed. A majority of those were instructional aides. I know they're working on other issues because we've had other positions that have had struggles to be filled, and hopefully, that is being addressed because kids are not able to get what they need because we're unable to retain those positions. Onto my next half, I know I have like a minute and a half to go. Even with all of the struggles of keeping instructional aides, the teachers at Fitzgerald have pulled together, and they do everything they can. They communicate their needs, they get them. They're doing everything they can. And I hate to see them struggling to put it together because they don't want the kids to lose out, which are losing out. So the RSP teacher at Fitzgerald, I wouldn't pick another one. I would leave the district before I would go to another school. He is absolutely amazing, and the teamwork that the teachers have there have been wonderful, and it's, I couldn't say enough about them. So it's not that the department, the staff isn't trying to pull together, it's just we need to give them what they need. They shouldn't have to struggle. They shouldn't have to worry about, you know, the kids getting what they need. So hopefully that personnel issue can be different for next school year for many different levels. Thank you.
Next, Brenda Parker.
Good evening, board, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to address you. I've addressed you twice this year on the positive impact that Frisbee Middle School has had on our community and the positive changes that has come from that school because of the outstanding leadership and administrative staff that is there at Frisbee. Needless to say, my heart is vexed and was vexed when I found out that one of our administrative staff, Dr. Balagon, was gonna be removed from that school. So I just wanna just go through a couple of things for you, and I just want you to ask, I wanna ask you to reconsider, as I've asked you to consider, to not mess with that staff that works in the first place as we go through our restructuring and our redesigning or whatever we need to go through. The goal is to mimic what works. Day Creek Intermediate, Alicia Lyon, David Apadaka, Sandra Fleming, Edawanda Middle School, Janayla Cantu Myricks, Kimberly Jenkins, Justin Coyman, Heritage Intermediate, Laura Roland, Twyla Bowman, Mr. Bradshaw. Why do I mention these schools? Because they are a middle school that carried, when they were having the API scores, 800-plus middle schools. Why? Why did they have these numbers? Because they had an administrative staff that was put in place that worked, that worked together, and that district did not disturb that flow. I'm asking Rialto Unified School District Board to reevaluate this decision that you've made. As you know, Frisbee Middle School struggled before this administrative staff that's in place there now came to that school because of their great leadership and because of their dynamic work together as an administrative staff, bringing other faculty into the fold and, and actually grooming them into the culture of the school, but not only the school, but also the community. It has worked. A school that carried very low numbers and very low esteem has built its numbers and its esteem because of its administrative staff. I do respect what you're doing. I'm not fighting you- I'm not fighting you, I'm not pushing. I am offering you information that I know firsthand as a community member. It takes three to five years for a system to work. Three to five years. These schools that I've mentioned in the Etowah School District, and I know of others in Vetland's and other school districts that work, those people have been in place for years, over five years, seven years, 10 years, 14 years, together as a team. And that way, they could flourish and nurture the staff that will also be a flourish and nurturing community to the student. Why destroy something that works? We have something that works. I encourage you to please take what Frisbee has built that works, mimic that in our other middle schools and make it work. Don't break it, don't fix it if it's not broken. Please, I urge you to do that. Thank you and have a great evening.
Buenas noches, miembros de la mesa directiva.
Good evening, board members.
President, Mr. Montez.
President Montez.
Superintendent interino, Mr. Islam.
Mr. Islam, the superintendent interim.
And the audience. Mi nombre es Celia Zelaya Saravia y soy coordinadora de Amigos Unidos.
My name is Celia Zelaya Saravia and I am the coordinator for Friends United.
Grupo de apoyo para padres de niños especiales.
And this is the support group for children that are special.
Y quiero hacerles una invitación.
And I would like to give you an invitation.
Para que nos acompañen a la celebración anual.
That you could join us in a celebration, this annual celebration.
De los sacramentos de los niños especiales.
That is for children, the special children. You keep sacramentos?
Sí.
Sacrament?
Sí.
Sacrament for, sacrament for special children.
Que será el día domingo 21 de junio.
And this will take place Sunday, the 21st of June of this year.
A las 3:00 de la tarde.
At 3:00 p.m.
En la Catedral de San Bernardino.
And that will be in San Bernardino Cathedral.
Eh, la dirección es 2525.
The address is 2525.
North Arrowhead Avenida.
And this is North Arrowhead Avenue.
En San Bernardino.
In San Bernardino.
Será un honor contar con la presencia de todos.
And it will be an honor to count with all of your presence.
Gracias y los esperamos.
And we wait for you there.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Flores. I've been a school bus driver for over 15 years here with Rialto Unified. There has been many injustices in our department. For the past three years, our department has had no consistency, no communication, and no structure. All of our complaints have fallen on deaf ears. Drivers have been mistreated, have lost excess amount of wages due to contracting out, lack of consistency with regard to procedure on extra work duties, and past practices have been ignored completely. At the beginning of this school year, three new people were hired to run our department. A senior director, a senior director, a manager, and a supervisor. Drivers were hopeful, that, drivers were hopeful, but sorry to say, we have been let down once again. Externally, all looks well in our department, but internally, us drivers are frustrated, neglected, retaliated against, and were threatened with interrogation. Morale is at its all-time low. We have gone through, through this and have been, and this has been our constant lies for the last three years. We are here today at a last-ditch effort to ask for your help and finally, be treated equally and fairly. Please note that our presence here today is a huge leap of faith. We, we fear retaliation. At present, there are drivers being unjustly disciplined for that, for having the audacity, quote-unquote audacity of, to question procedures and whether these changes follow guidelines and our contract. Please, and I emphasize please, there is no way we can inform you, we emphasize please that you help us. There is no way that we can inform you of all of our concerns in three minutes, but this is a start. Thank you for your time to listen to our concerns and hopefully, this will open up a dialogue between yourselves and us drivers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do, do we have any more, do we have any more family employees that would like, our USD family employees that would like to speak on the same subject matter? Did you turn, did you guys turn in the slip? But, if the board, you don't have any more slips?
I have one more slips.
Oh, okay. Yeah, oh, okay. No, that's okay, you can come forward. I was just going to suggest if we had a lot more, that we have them all together, but that's fine.
Hi, my name is Devon Hurd and I've been employed with Rialto Unified for 14 years as a bus driver. One of the main reasons why I'm here today is because of the driver being here, Ms. Chavez, in regards to the mail ticket. I have a problem with that because over the years, we have been allowed to do certain things. Well, we had Mr. Humphrey as our supervisor there and that was also explained to, I guess, management in regards to the past practice procedures. But, my main thing is, if there's a problem with whatever that person may have done, why is it that management hasn't come to us, the rest of us drivers, as of today and said anything in regards to that being an issue? If it was an issue that led her to be here today, that seemed like it would have been something that you would have informed the fellow drivers that, that's, no, no, that you're not allowed to do that. And no one has come to us and said that. So, there's an opportunity there by no one informing us that, that someone else can come along and make the same mistake and also be sitting here for that. I think that this is severe to me, is severe. And there's other things that could have been done to discipline her actions outside of her being here, being brought this far. And that's my main thing. Thank you.
Just in regards to the concerns brought forth today, Mr. Islam, could you put up together a report for the board on these concerns and maybe schedule some time to really listen to some of these concerns and look into them, provide a board, the board a report, please?
Yes, I can. I have one more slips. May I? Thank you, Mr. Montez.
I think they're still off the agenda.
I am not on the agenda.
I've got requests for all. I'm sorry? I have a request to speak on, off the agenda.
Good evening, Honorable Board, Interim Superintendent. I rise before you tonight because I felt that it wouldn't be right to allow so many things to go out without there being some response. I, you've heard a lot tonight. We pride ourselves as the new management team over at Transportation to carefully follow established law, ed code, government code, labor code, CHP, Department of Transportation regulations, the collective bargaining agreement that we are following, which all classified employees must adhere to. The Transportation Department cannot run completely and independently of district policy and collective bargaining agreement and established rules and regulations. So, we stand here at the crossroads tonight. August 7, 2013, I was shown a video of an employee looked, appeared to be mishandling district funds. From that night, set off a series of events and gave birth to the age of accountability within the Rialto Unified School District. And from that time, one year later, we walked in as a new management team into the Transportation Department. For decades, it's been well-known that there are issues there. We walked in hopeful as well. We were excited about change, but we were also excited about shifting the focus from an employee-oriented department driven by seniority strictly to a student-service-driven department where student service to students and departments is the primary goal of the department. We pride ourselves and guarantee this board that we have not violated any of your policies, your regulations, any of your guidance, anything in the collective bargaining agreement. We've made some serious strides towards making change. This year, we brought back oversight over our county stu, our students that were being transported in the county system. This year, we were able to reduce transporta, contracting out transportation by more than $25,000 and we intend to keep going. This year, we were able to secure grants, getting buses, hopefully we'll get 16 more buses. This year, we were able to get a grant to add GPS tracking so that we would be able to respond to parent concerns about bus location. This year, we brought nine more routes from county into the district for summer school transportation. So, we are making changes. We're making carefully thought-out, positive legal changes. And I guarantee this board that under my leadership, no employee will ever be treated unfairly or have their rights violated. Thank you.
Mr. Islam, do we have, oh, we have one more request by Mr. Martinez. Would you like to take the podium?
Yes, thank you. After so many middle school graduations, I'm kind of stiff, so bear with me. Thank you for coming forward, first of all, and we're looking into it. I know that I've got some answers for you. At least one of you came to me. And to Admin, I have heard a slightly different spin. Anyway, I'm, I'm not here to, to address that, I'm here for, for this. But, I am working on it. President Montez is working on it and we just need to continue to, to have the discussion. But, right as of tonight, I do want to request of Admin that works with you that anyone who works with you should be addressing you with the same respect they would address any board member. That is our expectation. I, I know the board feels that way. Okay, what I'm actually here for. I'm concerned with legal fees. I continue to talk about it. Stakeholders have requested the following information from me. For the purpose of the Freedom of Information Act, FOIA, request you may use my name as a requester. Please begin by including all billings beginning June 1, 2014 to current and future billings. I request an itemized billing statement from each attorney firm. Information should include who requested or spoke with the firm, the topic, or why a legal resource was required. Why was this firm used? Any specific firms? Hours spent billed by attorney or a clerk, or was it an expense? To minimize staff efforts, please send exact PDF scanned copies of billing to each board member once a month. The LaZano Smith LLP format and information covers most of my request. Alternately, the billing sent to the San Bernardino County Superintendent of the Schools for payment may also have this information. If I need more information, I will request it. In particular, of concern to the community, concern has been expressed to me as, why are we using small firms? With limited resources and coverage instead of large firms with hundreds of years of experience, many offices, expertise covered by legal specialists on any educational topic, coverage nationwide, and positive references. It is obvious we get much more nationally, by nationally-recognized large firm. Also, the county council, county council is available at $94 an hour rather than $250 an hour. Specific question from the public is, how can we justify spending the same hourly attorney fee on a small firm when we get much more from a large firm for the same price? The scope of legal knowledge with a large firm is vast, deep, and wide. The small firm is limited by comparison. The bottom line is, people see money being spent on attorney friends. They want justification of this money being spent on cronies. It looks like a gift of public funds. They want to hold each board member accountable. We need to be careful how this spending looks to the community and be ready to justify each expense in public. Thank you. Thank you, President Montez.
Mr. Montez, none, there's no more.
Not on the, aren't your comments on agenda items?
That, that's correct.
Okay. So, since there are no comments on agenda items, we now will go on to section three, comments from Association Executive Board members. First, do we have any members here from Rialto Education Association that would like to address the board, make public comment?
Good evening, board. President Montez, Interim Superintendent Mohamed Islam, and guests and viewing audience. My name is Lisa Lindberg, President of the Rialto Education Association. I just have a few things to mention this evening. I'm happy to report that approximately 45 of our 58 temporary contracted teachers have been hired back. And, yes, with regular contracts. And I'd like to thank Nancy O'Kelly for really driving that home periodically with this board and administration. They are absolutely thrilled. Second of all, I'd like to mention that I've sat down with Marina Madrid from the EL Department. She and our IPD Chair Mercedes Perez and I sat down with her. And it was refreshing to meet with an administrator down in our office, actually, who was really thinking out of the box. Our members need to be trained at the elementary level next year for EL. And there's always a concern about subs and she did this amazing thing. She's come up with a method, she's given it to the principals. There's no need for subs for the whole week. The teachers will be trained for two hours and I told her, when people think out of the box, I have to tell people and I usually tell the board, so I wanted to mention her name. And finally, our members ratified our contract last night. We gave them about two weeks to vote. It's all electronic now, it's not paper ballot and we're happy to be going into summer break with a settled contract and some great language that is going to help some of our special ed students. We've capped the class sizes, that was huge for us, and lowered the class sizes just a little bit more at Myler and some other language items that we really appreciate. And I'd like to thank Tom Halderson and his team, it was great to work with them and enjoy the rest of your summer. Thanks.
Next, do we have anyone from CSCA?
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Interim Superintendent and Transportation, along with audience. I have to say that tonight, I am extremely proud of our Transportation Department. I am extremely proud. These are the people that our students see first thing in the morning. These are the people who report to work before anybody else in this district. These are the people that work together as a team to make sure that all students' needs are met. I really appreciate you listening to everything they had to say this evening and do look forward to you getting involved and helping us to give them the things that they so deserve. I also want to congratulate REA on being able to ratify their contract and I would like to hope that we would be given the same sort of consideration so that we can move forward in CSCA as well. And that's all I'd like to say. Thank you, have a good evening.
Next, do we have anyone from CWA?
Good evening, Mr. Montez, Board, and Islam. I haven't seen you guys. I haven't seen you guys for a while because I've been kind of involved with personal things. My wife retired from San Bernardino after 20 years, and unfortunately, her party was the same night your party was. I've been receiving timely notices of meetings here, not been receiving timely notices of meetings here in Rialto. I haven't been able to come to them. I'll get the notice the day of the meeting or maybe the day before, and I need a little bit more time. I would like to stay involved with your El Cap and stuff because right now, to be honest with you, I know that San Bernardino, yesterday in our meeting, they got $44.4 million. I'm kind of curious what you guys got from the last governor's budget? No comments?
I didn't get anything.
I almost want to talk to myself Kelly there about her, isn't her high school and how they're doing on that one hour for lunch.
Doing beautifully.
Great. I'd like to find out more about that. But I also want to congratulate the district on this. In San Bernardino, we had training on Friday, and one of the things that was brought up that we didn't have was a handbook. So, we started calling around to different districts for a handbook, and my cohort, Heather over there, has gone through your handbook, and it is beautifully written, but doesn't replace training. So, we were going to look at it and write one for San Bernardino along the lines that you have, but it was a greatly, well-written book. We begin negotiations on June 16th, I believe, and as REA has done, I hope that we also have a great time because I know we're completely rewriting our contract because this is the end of the third year. So, we'll be doing it from scratch. And I hope that if you have vacancies for new teachers, that you looked at some of your subs. I understand you just hired, what was it, 45 of your 58 contract teachers? So, maybe you can look at some of the subs that are great. So, and bus drivers, I admire you putting up with those kids at that time in the morning. That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Board, may I respond to the wrong, the number?
Sure.
It's about $35.7 million.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher. Next, we go to Rialto School Managers Association. Okay, hearing none, we go on to public hearing, Item D. This time, I'd like to open public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Vote by board members?
Aye.
Any person wishing to speak on an item on the public hearing agenda will be granted three minutes. The first item is Williams Inspections Report, 2014-2015 Third Quarterly Report. There's a reference in the back of the agenda, D 1.1. Do we have anyone here wishing to speak on this item for public hearing? Well, hearing none, I'd like to close public hearing. Do we have a motion to close?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Vote by board members?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we go to Consent Calendar Item. All items on the Consent Calendar will be acted upon in one motion unless pulled by the Board of Education members or the Interim Superintendent for Individual Action. Do we have a motion to approve Consent Calendar Items, Reference E through J?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have discussion?
I have some polls.
Okay, Vice President, Ms. O'Kelly, what would you like to poll?
H6, H11, and H12.
H6, H11, and H12.
Okay, on H6...
Do we have any other, do we have any other polls?
No.
Okay, take it away, Mrs. Kelly.
I feel that VCS, the company, should have verified what the template was going to be, not just look up something online and assume it was going to be the same as it was the year before. I understand they need to revise the application, but I do not understand why we should have to pay for their mistake. Their price has almost doubled from the original approved amount, and I fear that it looks like we almost, we were given a lower amount to approve in order for them to get the contract, and now the price has almost doubled in order for them to complete the task. I don't feel that's the way to do business. I don't know if that's what happened, but the point is, it is not the district's fault that they initially filled out the wrong template. It is their fault, and I don't feel we should have to pay extra to get the right template filled out.
I'd like to ask our Director of Facility, Ms. Chu, to respond to the Board, your concern.
Good evening, Board Presidents, Mr. Montez, Honorable Board Members, Mr. Mohamed Islam. I'd like to explain the way I understand it, that it was not to anybody's knowledge that the California Energy Commission changed the template. It was just done as business as usual. And then, we have a certain timeline to prepare the application. So, we get started in February, and then in March, before they opened the window for the grant application, they published the new procedure and the format. And at the same time, they increased the grant amount. And of course, they demand more information and changed their focus from cost effectiveness to the greenhouse gas, environmental impact, and the health consequences of this, the project. So, I, I think the increase of dollar amount is valid because in the, originally, they used the dollar amount that is based on the repetition of the grant they submit for Temecula Unified School District. So, it started pretty low. And so, with this addition, I, I believe we still get a good deal compared what they charged Temecula a couple of years ago. And this is my understanding of the situation.
My problem with it is, it seems that we are on a regular basis agreeing and approving contracts for a specific amount, and later, those individuals or companies are coming back and, for whatever reason, requiring more money from us. I don't think that's the way to do business, not in my book. But this, to me, seems, I don't know, they should have, I would make sure I knew exactly what I was doing before I filled it out, and then to charge the district as if it was our fault that they filled out the wrong form does not make sense.
Mrs. Kelly, as I understand, this is not a consultant fault who performed the work based on the format. It's the California Energy Commission's. If we choose not to go revise and submit, resubmit the format they're going to accept, district going to lose the grant.
I understand that. I'm just making my point.
On the matter, to make it clear, it is not the consultant asking for additional money because he underestimated the work. It is the work he has to do over again. So, as, I'm saying, it's not the consultant's fault. It is the California Energy Commission's who came up with a new format, and they also increased the grant amount with other conditions attached. So, we have two options. Either don't go reapply, you lost an extra grant, half a million dollar, or pay the fee. Consultant has to do the work over again to resubmit the application. Am I correct?
Yes. It's, some of the work is still valid, they started, but additional information needed to be provided, and so, that's the extra because the extra is so much over the original agreed amount, so we have to do agreement to cover this revision of agreement.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You've explained, I don't agree, but...
Thank you for your understanding.
Does anybody else have any more questions in regards to this item? Thank you, Mrs. Chu.
Okay. Next, I have H11.
Did you want to take a separate vote on that item, six?
Oh, have we approved the others already?
No, we haven't, but did you want, did you want us to take a separate, or would it be, would it be good to, would it be good to approve all the items that are not being polled?
Yeah, and then approve the polls.
We have a motion to accept.
All items except for H12 and H11.
Six.
Are you good with six, or you want to separate that one too?
I guess.
Mr. Montez, since it was polled, I would recommend...
Yeah, do it as a poll.
Okay, then, all items except H6, 11, and 12.
Do we need a second?
We already got one. Do we have a preferential vote by student board member?
Aye.
Thank you. Vote by board members?
Aye.
Aye. So, motion carries to approve all items E through J except for H6, 11, and 12. We'll go ahead and take a vote on H6 since it's already been discussed. Do we have a motion to approve item H6?
Aye.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Rial, and Ms. Walker. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we go to item H11.
Okay, H11 is the one about the speech therapist, and it's $6,100 for two weeks of work.
I'll address it, and then I'll have Ms. Del Rio go up to the microphone. My understanding is, we offered the speech therapist job for ESY for the summer, extended to our employees first. Only one was interested, and then we had to go outside the district to hire. We also have a backlog of preschool and the community to test kids on speech, so we decided that we would combine both together to be able to do that, and the firms cost significantly more than hiring from within. So, I'll let Ms. Del Rio explain.
Good evening, President Montez, members of the Board, Mr. Islam and audience. I just want to tell you that this year, we have added preschool to our ESY, which should have been happening. So, that means we have an increase of services that we need for our special ed preschoolers regarding speech and assessments as well. So, this year, you're going to see that we also have psychologists working during intercession, and that's because with three-year-olds, you have to continue testing them when they're coming from regional center or they're coming in from homebound or whatever, because we serve kids zero to 22. But we serve in our district, three to 22. So, as soon as a child reaches three, we are obligated to test them as part of child fine. So, in ESY, we receive applications, and based on those applications, some of the children, based on who signs up and based who is eligible, you have to look and see how many of those receive speech services. This year, we have more kids in ESY, more kids that need, that need speech services, and definitely more kids that need to be assessed during the summer, which are the preschools that have never been done. So, in all that, we figure we needed three speech therapists this year in lieu of two compared to last year. And so, in going back to our speech therapist, only one person was interested in working ESY. We were hoping we would have an additional person. And so, in looking at the person that we currently have from this particular company, we budgeted for her to be, only be here up to the 15th of June. So, we have to now cover all the way to the 30th. So, that's why you see an increase in money. And yes, they are expensive, and we are looking at options where you can pay a finder's fee to these companies that have a particular, speech therapist is working well with us and is from a particular company, they will charge us a finder's fee to keep that person if we want to. And when you look in the long run of how much we're paying for them, the finder's fee is minimal because we can actually keep that person as an employee and no longer contract them. In this sense, this person has already been working with us all year, and we couldn't, and in order to keep her so we don't lose her, we had to extend to be able to pay her. And we're still facing the challenge of covering July to July 25th. So, you might see the contract coming back because they're looking for people that can cover us for that amount of time as well because we're competing with all the districts right now.
And I understand that, and I understand speech therapists are, you know, extremely rare. But my question was this, if you look at $6,100 for two weeks of work, that's $12,200 a month, or $144,000 plus a year. That's, you know, I don't know any teacher, administrator, or whatever that makes that kind of money hardly. So, it just seems like an absurd amount to pay for one person.
Again, these companies, in my opinion, take advantage because there's such a big need. The districts always have vacancies. If you get an edge on, you're going to see that almost every district is looking for speech therapists. So, their prices are very comparable. They are between, I'd say, $75 to $85 an hour. These, in this particular case, the speech therapists are not going to be working only four or five hours of ESY. They're going to be working a full day because we're going to be providing services and assessing. So, these, so the speech therapists are working a full day, and so is the psychologist. So, as far as the amount goes, that's really out of our control. We negotiate with them and try to bring it as long as we can, but even the bilinguals are going to cost us more, and this happens to not even be a bilingual person. They can't even find us a bilingual person.
Are we at all working with the universities to encourage people to become speech therapists?
Yes, but what's happening with the universities, and I think people need to understand, you know, I come from the San Diego area, and San Diego State was probably one of the three universities that offered speech programs, and they would only take between, I'd say, 30 and 40 new students a year to enroll into the program, and you have to have a 4.0 to get in there, okay? I'm talking, it's a graduate program. While everybody's a 4.0 that applies because that's probably the only way you're going to get in. The problem is that if San Diego State or University of Redlands have 40 spots, we're competing against the whole nation for those 40 spots. So, the 40 kids that get it aren't just from San Bernardino County. They're all over. They're all over. So, when we, when we recruit, we recruit outside the state to bring people in. In San Diego, it was easy because I'd say, oh, you can see the ocean from my office, you know? But it just depends where you live and what you're going to offer. I mean, I offer the snow here. I say, well, we have Big Bear, we have Arrowhead, you know? And so, it just depends. But we're competing against districts who are giving $5,000 signing bonuses. We're competing against $10,000 bonuses. We're competing them being in a separate pay scale. We're competing against them saying, this is not worth it because what happened, we offered it to our own people, and they said, how much am I going to get paid? Am I getting my per diem? And I said, no, you're getting the hourly rate. So, their comment was, you guys are not thinking well, but they used the C-word. You're not thinking well because I'll go and work clinical and get paid how much an hour, Erica? About $85 to $90 an hour. So, they're saying, pay me what you pay the agency and I'll stay. Well, we can't.
Just a quick question. So, the, so the, the cost is not to exceed, correct?
Right.
So, the total cost might not, might not be completely spent?
Right.
And then, the other thing, these are services required for us by law to provide according to the special education students individual...
Yes, we don't have a choice.
Okay.
And the problem is...
And, and we have no one in-house to provide it?
We have people in-house, but we were only able to...
Certain, certain amount of caseloads.
To get one person to say, I will come and, and do it. And, and so, the other two are contracted. And then, the other person that was contracted, it was budgeted all the way to ESY because we knew that at least we get that person in there. This is a new person that started with us, and we were hoping that we weren't, we weren't anticipating to need more than two. So, but I do want to warn you that we might have a contract coming in to cover the month of July because we're looking at that. Okay? Like the psychologist, we can't find one right now, not even one, so we might have the contract. So, we met with a psychologist, said, please, we beg today. And Julian was really good about doing that today, so he got people to do four days here, four days here, four days here, but we're still missing how many days? Eight? But one of them said, no, after all.
I guess.
So, four days are still left out of the 24.
And they would rather work on a contract than work full-time for a district with benefits and things like that?
Well, well, yes, because they get paid more money, but... Well, well, yes, because they get paid more money, but what we're telling them is saying, listen, stay here, and you get to have a good retirement system...
Right, that's what I'm saying.
And so, we have talked them into it.
I apologize, the conversation is very well, but we have a board meeting that we need to move on with.
But we're working on it.
But the conversation is very, very good. Let's, uh, let's go ahead and...
Thank you.
Thank you. If no one else has anything else, let's go ahead and, um, just a quick comment.
If we do have to, uh, go to July, let's try and get our own people. The board needs to reconsider possibly paying our people what outside agencies pay.
Okay.
I mean, I'd rather, you know, it's, the children, as you know, uh, do better when they, they have the same teacher, the same person working.
Right, exactly, that's the most important thing.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Martinez. Do we have a motion to approve item H-11?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next we go on to, uh, item H-12.
Well, uh, Mr. Islam, perhaps you can answer this. I am confused as to why Frisbee is having to use step-up funds to get a computer lab on their campus, which is essential for student learning. And a lot of the programs we're learning today, that seemed absurd. Are we not helping? Are we not covering some of the cost of this computer lab for them?
I'll refer to Dr. Ed Sussa, please.
It's, it's not for the computers, Ms. O'Kelly, it's for the infrastructure, to be able to put in the lines, et cetera.
Right.
Can't use categorical money for that because it involves, uh, it's putting the lines...
Well, maybe we have to use general fund, but I don't think a step-up money is like extra money for a school. It's not for something essential like a computer lab.
Again, this item was requested by the principals. I think you're absolutely correct because when it comes to infrastructures, we're responsible. We means district general fund. I'll look into this, and, um, and the step-up fund belonged to the school, and the money goes back to the classrooms for other need and purposes. I agree with you, so I will ask the board to approve this, or perhaps change the funding source.
Why don't we just pull it until we see...
I can do that, yeah. This is okay, board, we can pull.
Now, the, the funding, the funding generated is from the school itself?
Right.
The step-up fund is a...
Right, but, but from that particular school site? So they're asking permission to use the revenues that they generate at their own school site for their own needs?
This is the principal requested this. It's not that we asking them.
No, 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 that, I know, but I'm, for clarification purposes, what I'm understanding is that the school site that generates its own step-up revenue is asking to use that, say, those same funds that are, uh, that are, uh, for them for something that they need.
Back to the...
In other words, they don't want to wait for the school district to fund it. They want to fund it themselves out of money.
You're correct.
They themselves generate.
It's their money.
I don't see anything wrong with that.
It's their money. So again, principal didn't approach me, or...
Can I just clarify, Ms. O'Kelly? In terms of the Common Core, the district has provided equitable labs for all schools. This is an extra lab that Frisbee is requesting, and that's, they're willing to put the money in so that they can have an extra lab dedicated to mathematics for their kids so they don't have to compete, you know, to having labs.
From the funds that they themselves generate through their own Saturday school program.
You're correct, this is their money.
Is that, is that something, is that illegal?
No, no, it's not illegal. My thought was, it's more of a district responsibility to provide things that are essential to the learning environment.
Again, as you heard, extra lab, the principal like to have, and the money was, um, really earned by the school to the students, um, and we...
Are you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm okay with that. That's why I looked at this with the principal...
Party is okay with it.
All right, well... There, it's nothing, it's illegal or it's not legal, but it is their money. They're putting back to the...
And they want to use it in their way.
Right.
Okay.
Can, can you bring us something that we would split the cost with them? I'd like to see the schools, you know, keep some step-up funds so they can do more for the kids.
I can, I can offer this, or I can further discuss with, uh, with, um, Mr., you know, principal.
I'm sure you'd be okay with that.
But the fact of the matter is that time sensitive, that we want to get this done during the summer when there's no students.
Is that what they want to do?
Yes, if we look, it's effective June fourth.
It's time sensitive.
And I will recommend, board, if you approve it, I will work with principals.
Do we have a motion to approve this, uh, item? Thank you, Ms. Martinez, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Royall, all in favor?
I, I would like a report that, of, of what agreement you came to with Mr. Asu...
Yes.
Mr. O.
Yes, I can.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item thirteen, uh, well, I'm sorry, we already did it. Next we go on to facilities, planning, consent. No, I'm sorry. Now we go on to item K, discussion action items. First item is one, approve Rialto Unified School Districts two thousand fifteen through two thousand eighteen Local Control Accountability Plan, ALCAP, with the purpose of identifying and meeting annual goals for all pupils with specific actions and services to address state and local priorities. Do we have a motion to approve item one?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez, do we have a second?
Second, and a call for discussion, please.
Thank you, Ms. Walker, um, and take it away.
So my question is just, uh, this is our, we're finalizing the ALCAP plan now, um, and we had our public, it was available for the public for the last few weeks, correct? Where did, oh, I'm sorry. What happened to Dr. Disso? Okay. So right now, have there been any, since it was submitted to us, to the board, have there been any changes or amendments to the plan that was submitted to the county and posted for public? And could you please elaborate on what those were?
Yes. The county did give us, because we submit it on, at, right after the board workshop, and the county did give us some feedback. There weren't any changes. The content is the same, and the expenditures are the same. It's the format that the county asked us to reconstruct on the format. So I have updated copies for each of the board members on that, um, with the new format. But expenditures and the content has remained the same.
Okay, excellent. So as long as there are no financial or contextual changes for the ALCAP, we're okay?
No, what you saw on May twentieth is what it contains now. And you'll just see that the format is a little different, and that was resubmitted to the county, uh, for review, mhm, and so, um, that's where we're at.
Sounds good, thank you.
Ms. Kelly?
I have K-5, seven, and, well, ten.
We're going to go through them individually. We don't do consent calendar on these items. If, we could just wait till we get there?
Oh, that's right, okay.
Do we have any more questions regarding, uh, item one, or comments, Ms. Walker, or anybody else? Are we ready to vote? Vote by board members for item K-1, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next we go on to, uh, discussion action items number K-two. Adopt FY two thousand fifteen through two thousand sixteen budget including commitment of funds and all stated conditions for the following funds: general, capital facilities, child development, debt service, nutrition services, state school building, and modernization; special reserve, bond interest and redemption, and general obligation bonds. Do we have a, a motion to approve item K-two?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez, do we have discussion?
Yes, so same question around the budget. Have there been any changes since our posted, um, drafted budget from our last meeting? Have there been any changes last two weeks since our last budget meeting?
I don't think so. I'd like to refer to Diane Romo, our Director of Fiscal, is here. What do, we, board, you recall, we did a study sessions, and there's no major changes, best of my knowledge.
Good evening, board, um, that is correct. The only change that we did do was we updated the revenues for the projections put out by the state, um, which was...
The fifty, yeah, the revised budget, okay.
That was the only change we did. Um, no expenditures were changed.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next we go to item K-three, adopt a resolution number fourteen dash fifteen dash eighty-two, authorizing the district to establish separate compressed natural gas grant funds slash resources, Fund Forty, Resource Nine Eight Four Zero, for the Rialto Unified School District's compressed natural gas station project. Do we have a motion to approve item K-three?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Royall and Mr. Martinez. Do we have discussion or comments?
Just a quick comment, great job. This is a long time coming. Uh, thank you, Mr. Islam.
You're welcome.
This is actually going to be a money generator.
Thank you.
Love it. Thank you, President Montez.
You're, you're welcome, anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next we go to item K-four, approve the Illuminate Data and Assessment System contract with Illuminate Education, Inc. That includes the NSPEC Item Bank from July first, two thousand fifteen through June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen. Do we have a motion to approve item K-four?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. O'Kelly, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Walker, do we have any comments or questions? Hearing none, do we, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next we go to item K-five, authorize the district to contract with School Improvement Network, LLC for one-year subscription from July first, two thousand fifteen through June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen. Do we have a motion to approve K-five?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Walker, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez.
I have discussion.
Take it away, Ms. O'Kelly.
More of a question, but, uh, this network sounds excellent, but it's pricey. And how will we know how much it is being used? Um, is there some way to monitor or, or get data on the amount of usage so we know if we're getting our money's worth or not?
Dr. Disso, please.
Right, we, we actually can pull reports that we have monitored each school, and we've given out each quarter, a report to each principal on how many classroom walkthroughs they've done, in terms of how many videos have been watched, et cetera, so we can actually pull the data. It also allows our teachers to differentiate the staff development, so if they know something, they can actually expand their knowledge by looking at the different, uh, areas, you know, even our special ed, we have actually put videos there that they can also learn more material. So it offers you staff development at your desk. It offers our principals staff development for themselves too, but also be able to digitally get the classroom walkthroughs that they can share with their staff, but also keep trend data as to how that classroom is doing.
Well, that's my whole thing, is I just want, it's very easy. Teachers and administrators at the site are extremely busy, and you don't always have a whole lot of time to turn on the computer and get staff development. So, uh, I just want to make sure it's going to get good usage.
I'll let Mr. Jasmine Valenzuela also ran different reports this year, so would you like to explain?
The staff development portion is available twenty-four-seven. You can actually pause it where you leave off and come back to it. You can watch it together during a P L C and have discussion as well. And it also, the walkthrough template is actually designed after the Common Core shifts in mathematics and E L A. So it gives, uh, administrators a good indicator of how those shifts are being implemented in each classroom and then school-wide.
I know, it sounds wonderful, but it's not, it's worthless if it isn't being used. That's my whole point.
We can actually give you a printout of the last few months since we started using it, of the usage that we had this year.
Okay.
We actually have a couple of winning schools who use, uh, two things were looked at. They were given a free breakfast and a free lunch for, uh, the school that scored the highest, not, I don't want to say scored the highest, but had the highest usage, in the use of the staff development videos, and also in the use of the template for walkthroughs.
Okay, I'd be interested to see that.
Okay, we will provide that.
Go ahead. First of all, how do we know they're not just turning them on and walking away?
Because there's actually some response questions at the end.
Uh, secondly, is it available to them from home?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's why it's available twenty-four-seven.
I didn't want our people having to stay late.
Stay till twelve midnight. Not like our district workers, right?
Exactly, yes, it's getting there, isn't it? Thank you, President Montez.
Welcome. Yes, Ms. Walker?
And are any of the, um, videos or the, the training classes, um, available for CE, uh, for continuing education at all, or is it just per, uh, district?
They're available to all staff members.
Okay, and they'll give credit for their continuing education?
Oh, for units.
Formally, right, exactly.
That has, that has not been generated just yet.
No more questions or comments? With that, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Next we go on to item K-six, adopt a resolution fourteen dash fifteen dash eighty-three, which approves the plan to spend the monies received from the education protection account on instruction. And there's a reference K-six point one through four in the back of the tonight's agenda. Do we get a mo, can we get a motion to approve item K-six?
So moved.
Do we get, can we get a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next we go on to agenda item K-seven, uh, which is to adopt a resolution number fourteen dash fifteen dash eighty-four, authorizing staff to process the necessary transfers of appropriations to revise budget amounts during the course of the fiscal year to allow appropriation of access funds, transfers between designated and/or unapportioned appropriated fund balances, and any expenditure classifications, or balance any expenditure classification of the budget. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Royall, a second?
Second.
I have discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez.
Or a statement.
Take it away, Ms. O'Kelly?
Uh, I believe we, we went through the same thing last year with the wording. I needed to clearly spell out that Measure Y funds cannot be used for transfers, and it does not say that.
You're correct. Measure Y is your general obligation bond.
Right.
That, that earmark for special project.
But it sounds like you can use any fund.
And legally, we cannot transfer bond money to your, to your general fund or other operating fund, that's, by law, without your formal approval and approved by the, um, the bond oversight committee. So that, this is pretty standard, um, items to the board, um, and, um, we understand and your...
Interfund transferring is potentially what it is, right?
Yes, yes. And, um, so example, I'm giving you our child development fund need general fund contributions.
I understand all that. I just want the words excluding Measure Y funds in the item that we are approving.
Well, if you'd like...
Can we add that in there?
Yes, we can.
Would you like to make a motion to have that amended to this item so we could approve it?
Oh, okay. I make a motion that we add the words excluding Measure Y funds to item K-seven for approval.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Walker, Mr. Martinez, both tied there. All in favor to amend the item K-seven with the wording excluding Measure Y funds for this item?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now we've got to go back to the original, uh, the amendment passes, now we go back to the original item. Item K seven with the amendment. Do we have a first and a second to approve it with the amendment?
I have a first already.
Okay. And second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Few more items here. Item K eight, adopt the resolution number 14-15-85, implementing a pre-qualification process for contractors. Do we have a motion to approve item K eight?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Lokele. Do we have a second?
Second. With discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Go ahead, take it away.
So who, what department actually handles the, who will handle the pre-qualification process? I'm assuming that's-
The, our facilities department working along with the purchasing. They work together. Again, it's required on the Public Contract Code 20, 2111.6. It's required by law. It's the pre-qualifications prior to you go through the bidding process. So our facility department is the lead on this.
Okay. And so per, per every bid that we put out to the public, is there going to be a different process, pre-qualification process? Or they're, are you talking about just some general things that we're going to be requesting of vendors on any contracts?
I'll refer to Ms. Chu, please maybe further explain this, purpose of this item.
Honorable Board Members, Mr. Montez and Mr. Islam. This is regarding the state requirement to pre-qualify bidders for any contract that's over $1 million that's state-funded project. So we use this process on projects like the Kelly Crusoe and Jay Hugh Classroom Edition because we receive state fund for those projects.
Okay. So my question then is, thank you for that information because that then tells me, are they providing a template for the pre-qualification process for the vendors? I want to make sure that they were doing a fair and equitable process if we're doing it. So if it's mandated from the state, I understand it's probably a template. If that's the case?
We have been using the template or the questionnaire and rating system provided by our construction management company. They created that for the Kelly Crusoe-J Hugh project. We review that and we think we can apply the same questionnaire and rating system to future project that we use state fund in the project. So.
Okay. So is this just for state projects or are we using this across the board for any of our vendors that'll be coming through your department?
Ms. Walker, if I may answer this, this only applies to state school bond-funded project.
Thank you.
Not, not general obligation bond, Measure Y project. This is only state school bond-funded.
And with an amount exceed $1 million, then we are required to do that.
Thank you.
Mr. Royale?
There's almost a catch-22 on this particular adoption for the resolution. And I realize it's a state requirement, but you know, if it's our goal to create jobs, especially local jobs, this is an opportunity that we need to be careful with and consider all our options. A lot of times, the contracts will be awarded to a certain XYZ company and they will have a project manager. There's a due date in getting your applications in to that project manager for various subcontracts. And I guess what I'm trying to say is sometimes the contractors, even though they've been in business, they lack one or two items in their application. And you know, if you're building a bridge, you know, you've got to make sure that, you know, you have the highest qualified. There are some jobs that don't require that type of skill, but yet the cost is a million dollars. You're going to move all this dirt from point A to point B. My point is, what I'm suggesting is sometimes those contractors, those subs, this is a great opportunity and they come locally. They just don't have everything that they need. And I'm suggesting that maybe we can look into what they call piggyback. I'm making that word up myself. They can piggyback on the contractor who does have all the credentials in process. Obviously, they would be extending that as a favor, like a protege. You bring them along, then he gets the experience. He's already got his contractor's license. Down the road, he'll be able to meet those state requirements and voila, everybody won. You created more jobs and maybe kept some local. Because when these state requirements get so high, we've got to bring people from outside the state to do the work. That's happened before. Thank you. I wanted to bring that up.
Thank you, Mr. Royale. Do we have any other comments? With that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we go on to item K nine, which is to approve the contract with Think Together, Inc., a nonprofit corporation for the purpose of providing the after-school educational and safety AES program at 18 elementary and five middle schools. There's a reference K nine point one in the back. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second? Thank you, Ms. Lokele and Ms. Walker. Do we have any discussion?
Discussion. It is to my understanding that a lot of the special ed kids are provided services in the Think Together program. That's a good thing. There are the, there are the severely handicapped children too. Those are the kids that often are neglected because the expense involved. And tonight, we had other issues regarding expense. Let's not forget about those kids and find ways to be creative. Even if we don't have enough money in the grant, maybe that's something that together as a community, we can launch a fundraiser of some kind to start helping some of these kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Royale. Do we have any other discussion or comments? I just would like to add that it would be nice to include in the contract some quarterly reports to be requested or provided to the district so that we have a way of tracking and measuring the progress and the work being done by the after-school consultant. It would be, it would be good for the board and the district to be able to have those kinds of quarterly reports so we know exactly that we're getting the best services for the children in the after-school program. It's required of our staff, you know, it's required of our school sites, certain reports. You know, we should do the same for any, anybody that's providing a service, particularly an academic after-school service for the students. I'm surprised that it was not included in the contract itself, but.
The material I read about Think Together, that most of their schools, they do pull data. They get all kinds of reports and statistics. I don't know if that's not going on here in Rialto or?
Mr. Montez, Ms. Kelly, yes, in the body of the contract we're going to sign for next year, it is required that they have to report our two years in the public meeting and to the board quarterly report.
Okay.
The program performance, fiscal performance, and overall performance of the program. So it is there. I validate that.
Okay. So it is in the-
It is in the contract we're going to sign. This is simply an approving of the contract. Once we're going to sign the contract with your approval, that elements is there in the contract. So they will require to present, come to the board and present the report quarterly.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions or comments?
Justin, in that, in that presentation or their reporting, is it also included what are the academic achievement goals or anything like that?
I believe it's there. Ed, maybe you could want to comment on that?
I'll have Ms. Brantley go up to the podium. It's on page nine and they actually have addressed it.
And I don't have the contract with me tonight, but it is in there. Good evening, Board and President Montez and Mr. Islam. The company already for the past five years monthly submit reports regarding attendance. So we monitor that every month anyway. September 2014, the California Department of Education came out with a proposal for quality standards for the extended day program for all after-school programs and summer programs related to the, this AES grant. And so even the state isn't sure about how that's all going to play out. Eventually, it's going to be in the FPM monitoring process as well. But there are 12 standards. We're going to be working with Think Together to develop how we're going to assess that. They're not so as much quantitative as they are qualitative because in the original ed code for ACEs, it did specifically state the STAR assessments were going to be utilized. And now that we don't have STAR anymore, the state is even in limbo about what kind of quantitative data that we utilize. However, the qualitative data is going to be part of what's mandated by the state. All districts are going to be going through this whole evolution, the process of evaluating. And so we'll be a part of that and I'm sure when they do their presentations quarterly, it'll be based on that, what's required by the state as well. I have to answer your question. Anything else?
Another thing that I'd like to remind the board, this is the last year, next year will be the last year. We have to go back and reapply the grant. So the, that's something we need to have begin the conversations early on for the following year. So this is a, this contract-
So there's even a bigger importance in making sure that we have the data to support-
You're correct.
Applying for another grant.
You're correct. And this is a require a lot of work behind it, you know, to make sure you submit a grant early on and follow the deadline to get another three years perhaps, you know, the funding.
And we're all going to take your word that it's, the verbiage is in the contract?
I will present to you.
Okay.
If you want a copy of the contract, I'd like to present to you. I have a staff is standing here. I, you know, we review, validate this. That's your directions and this is there.
Thank you.
So if you want a copy of the contract, I'll be glad to send you a copy.
I will take your word for it, but it wouldn't be a bad idea to look it over.
Yes. I'll send you a copy after, with your approval. Now, I'll make sure I highlight it where the elements talks about the quarterly report.
Thank you, Ms. Brantley. Thank you. Appreciate it. With that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, K ten, to deny liability claim number-
Mr. Montez-
This item was not covered.
It's closed session. So if you please-
We're going to pull this item then.
Then come back.
Yeah. Do we have a motion to pull, to table item?
So moved.
K ten.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion, items will be pulled off the agenda. K eleven, approve the Rialto Unified School District Special Education Strategic Plan so staff may begin to implement the strategies and actions identified during the 2015-2016 school year. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Royale. Do we have a second? Thank you, Ms. Lokele. Do we have discussion?
Yes. Was somebody else?
Oh, you were the first.
So, hey. So just in reference to the strategic plan, is there a, is there a, these are all things that are going to take place regardless, right? We've already, they're coinciding with our LCAP and our, you know, the vision that we've set out in staffing and everything for this 15-16 year. Is that correct? Okay. So I would just want to say that I would be in favor of holding off on voting on a formalized strategic plan until our new superintendent gets here.
What, it's due to the county.
Oh, this is, so that was what I was going to ask.
Oh, you're talking about special ed. I'm sorry.
This is a special ed strategic plan.
Yeah, not the LCAP. I apologize. I thought we were talking about our educational strategic plan.
Right. And so just until the new superintendent comes on board, because I would hate to say that this is a vision that we have the district and as he comes in-
And not give the opportunity.
Exactly. So there are things, I mean, part of that, your strategic plan already lines up with our LCAP and what we are planning on doing. So it's not going to stop anybody from getting hired or anything, but the vision itself.
Yes.
So I'm just recommending to the board that we table this decision until after our superintendent comes on to vote on as a strategic plan because it may not be the, the world, the court at that time.
May I comment, Ms. Montez? Part of the responsibility was, and part of the scope of the work, the consulting firm, they have to present this plan to you. And again, it's your call if you don't want to implement the plan. And, and I know somebody's here, if want to speak to, he would be glad to present to you. This is part of their assignment to complete by June 30th to present to you, which you have tonight. Go ahead.
Good evening, Board Members.
Good evening.
So to address your question, there wouldn't be any negative impact on pausing on it. It's important for the, for the board to know that one of our commitments via our contract was to ensure that we finished this process. I do want to take the opportunity to thank the representatives, the teachers, the parents, the students. We have some here and I wanted to thank you personally for being there. We had 22 members and we averaged 18 attending each of our 10 meetings. So folks in, this is Rialto's plan. This is the voice of teachers, parents, and students in Rialto. I think it's important to acknowledge that. However, there, one waiting a month wouldn't have any negative impact on that. Some of the aspects of the, of the strategic plan likely would not be included in the LCAP at this point in time. Professional development, for example, and program implementation in terms of service delivery models. But it was intended, or at least the way we designed the plan, that a follow-up group would come together to make those determinations and inform the impact on LCAP in future years.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. If anybody else doesn't have a comment, I'd just like to say that I think it's a good idea, Ms. Walker. There's no negative impact in waiting just a little bit longer and having a fresh pair of eyes take a look at it. Might be able to offer some insight or something that might be able to improve it. But we do appreciate the, you know, you guys' report and the work that you've done. But thank you for being forthcoming and admitting that it wouldn't, it wouldn't have a negative impact. So. With that, did you want to?
Oh, I was just saying that we at least, we table it until the-
Did you want to table this, this item?
Yes.
So there's a motion to table the item K eleven. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lokele. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries for, and one abstention. Next, we go to item K twelve, which is to approve an agreement with HMC Architects for the required architectural services for the Eisenhower High School Art Theater project. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Do we have a second?
Second, but I have discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Lokele. Take it away.
Well, I just, I know there was a process for selecting the architect. I'd like to know what our history is with this architect, if they've ever done any projects in our district.
I'd like Ms. Chu, please come answer to the concerns. First of all, before she start, HMC is one of the large firm in the state. Based on, historically, they've been in this business for many, many years. I don't know the Rialto, so that's, I will refer to Ms. Chu.
As far as I have seen from the record, I've not seen HMC doing business, architecture business in the district. But HMC had their subsidiary, subsidiary. Our school advisors have helped the district in applying the Facility Hush Fund for Eisenhower High School Infrastructure Upgrade Project. And we have been approved for about $2 million of this fund pending state release, availability of fund and release of the fund. And also, I understand HMC has been involved in the past few years with ACE program. And that is to help high school student to be interested in the design engineering professional for their future career consideration. And the program offers the grant and opportunity in different project to give them incentive and interest in this career. And we have the architect here, representative here, Mr. Dan Banner. If you have question, you can, you may address to him directly.
Good evening, Board President, members of the board, interim superintendent, cabinet members. My name is Dan Benner. I am a principal architect and owner of HMC. We have, for the last 75 years, called Ontario Home. And a large preponderance of our work is in the local Inland Empire. Twenty-some years ago, back preceding 1996, we were involved in some of your modernization programs. And in my past life, I was the design architect who oversaw the Wilma Amina Carter High School's design and delivery. More recently, we have been working with the Eisenhower students that are part of Eric Atkinson's Engineering Pathways Program. And we created an Inland Empire affiliate of the ACE Mentor Program. It's a 22-year program. It's across the nation, started on the East Coast. And it's really about enticing students to be interested in pursuing careers in architecture, the A, construction, and engineering. So this campus here was our first campus that we launched the program three years ago. We've continued to operate here at the campus and our program has grown to four schools. Etawanda, Martin Luther King in Riverside, and then more recently, one of the Corona High School districts. We had our student graduation night at a Water District Headquarters project in Rancho Cucamonga and awarded seven of your students $1,000 scholarships. And we've had some of the best participation from your campus amongst all of the three that we're administering. So we look forward to reunion of sorts. It's almost been 20 years since we last worked here in the district.
I think your program with the students sounds wonderful and I'm- I think your program with the students sounds wonderful and I'm, I thank you for bringing it to our district and, and, uh, involving our students in it. However, I will add this, as a female, I would like you to target female students to become architects, so someday, someone will invent a ladies restroom with enough stalls.
I believe, I believe, uh, two years ago, uh, Lillian Cow, who was your valedictorian, was a graduate of our program.
Oh, wonderful.
She just recently touched base with us. Uh, we offer, once they get into a secondary career or trades program, uh, our enticement is to get them into the profession. And so she, uh, not only received, uh, a scholarship when she was graduating, but she's also reapplied each of the years that she's maintained her academic studies. And so we're looking forward, you know, in the three or four more years, she will be in the profession. She's at Cal Poly San Luis Obispo's Architecture Program.
And, uh, just so you know, I'm a former principal of Eisenhower High School, so Eisenhower has my heart and I want the very best theater on that campus that we can build. Okay.
Since I have an opportunity here, on the lines with the no stalls for the women, on another note, most of us, we indulge in food services of some kind, fast food services or somebody's providing food for us. You walk into a restroom and it's the community restroom for the workers and the, 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 uh, patrons, and you're out of paper towels or, uh, the plumbing's not working. It, it wouldn't take much to have like a little red light or a green light above the, the door to let you know that everything's okay. Think about that. I have never seen it, I've never seen it, but that would be nice, at least to know that there's no surprises in there. Think about it.
So if you ever go to Petco Park down in San Diego, uh, I'm pretty certain a female architect designed, uh, the restrooms, because the first time I went there, there was no line outside of the women's restroom and the men's restroom had a line screaming out of it.
I, that's fine. I just wanted to thank you for your program. I've seen it, uh, attended a couple of years back and it is a great program. The students are highly motivated and I wish we had more programs, so, uh, we've got other high schools. Bring it.
Thank you.
One thing I'd like to comment, uh, Board, I know HMC, uh, their, their performance high standard in the industry, and, uh, I'm, I speak from my experience using them, uh, other districts where I came from. So they, they carry the high standard of the work, not only work and, uh, design, everything else they do in the, in the industry.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any more questions, comments, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries for yeas and one abstention. Uh, next we go on to item K-13, approve the recommendations of the administrative hearing panel, AHP, stipulated case number 14-15-63.
I'll make a motion on that.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Vote by board members?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries for yeas and one abstention. Next we go to item L, comments from the interim superintendent. Take it away, Mr. Islam.
Thank you, President Montes. Uh, last, uh, two days, Monday, Tuesday, we had, um, our middle school promotions. The event was very outstanding. We had a large crowd of proud family and friends attended this event. I know, Mr. Montes, you're Tucson graduate, um, and, um, you being a proud father, and, you know, I, I'd like to thank everyone who attended and hope make this a very successful event. We should all be proud of our students and the achievement, um, to this event. This is a really great event. The next items I have, our 2015 high school graduations will be scheduled to be, uh, at, um, on this Sunday, June 7th, at, um, Citizens Bank Arena in Ontario. Uh, the schedule is as follows, um, Myler and Zupanik will be 10 a.m. in the morning, again, Sunday, this Sunday. Eisenhower High School will be 12 in afternoon. Rialto High School is 3 in the afternoon, and Carter High School will be 6 in, uh, p.m. Please plan to attend, this is a great event. Don't miss this event, I would like to see you all there. Thank you very much. Again, it's, uh, Sunday, this Sunday.
Thank you, Mr. Islam. Next we go to comments from members of the Board of Education. And, uh, first and foremost, we'd like to go to, uh, our specials, uh, Board Member, no other, no other than student Board Member, Marisol Angulo.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, everyone. Good evening, Board. Um, well, Sunday is graduation. Yay. And I'm really excited for that. I'll finally be closing the chapter in my life and beginning a new one and finally going out into the real world. And it's really exciting, so, thank you. Hope y'all have a nice night.
Thank you, Marisol. Uh, next we go to, uh, School Board, uh, Member, Mr. Joseph Ayala.
Well, thank you, President Montes. Uh, I'll take my time to start with issues and questions, uh, regarding, uh, staff and programs. I want to keep it kind of brief, but, uh, when we have issues regarding staff and programs, I think immediately the two words, respect and fairness. And this is not for just two or three people, but it's for all. And, you know, uh, it's important to listen to one another. Take turns when possible, whatever it is. It's your turn, my turn, we did that when we were younger, we still do it. Develop a reasonable routine that provides opportunities to problem solve and to listen to one another. And, and, and I know sometimes we call these meetings, okay? But it's important to have a routine, uh, set forward so things don't mushroom and get out of hand. And we've said this many times, because I heard it tonight too, but, uh, please do not fear retaliation. It's important that we all communicate and, um, you know, and, and in terms of communication, remember, it's, it's not what's said, but how it's said. So, if you keep the two words in mind, respect and fairness for all, uh, we shouldn't have issues and problems that escalate. And if you hear something that's offensive, uh, just, you know, just try not to retaliate and respond. It's just somebody communicating it in their own way to you. The, the shame comes when we don't really listen and we don't try to correct it. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Rialla. Next we go on to, uh, Board Member, Mr. Joseph Martinez.
All right. Thank you, President Ayala.
Montes.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I, I walked out for my bio break and, uh, confess, I am getting sleepy.
Wake up.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, uh, first of all, congratulations to graduating class of 2015. Also, the promoting class, which we've had already, of 2015, are middle schools and they're set to graduate in 2019. Sitting there listening to that, I'm going, boy, do I feel old, because they're, they're all getting younger. And I, anyway, I'm salt and pepper and kind of enjoying it, actually. Um, okay. To all of the students, wouldn't hurt some adults, uh, to each of us, surround yourself or ourselves with peers that bring out the best in you. That is the best advice I can give you. When you go by, by that, then, uh, always keep that handy. Then you'll know whether the peer is good for you or not. Thank you to the City of Rialto for inclusion of our students.
Yes.
Uh, we continue to, to look for ways to do that and, uh, it's hard when money's tight. It really is. Congratulations to Sarai Farrar and Diane Gallardo. It, it's awesome to see our students succeed, as you have, Marisol. Thank you to the bus drivers for coming and trusting enough. Today I was contacted by text and I, it was important for me to, to get the information to you that please come, the entire board has to hear it. Just one or two board members, because we can only attend two board members at a time because of the Brown Act. So this is the only forum where you can talk to the entire board. And please let us know if there is any retaliation. There, we expect none, we desire none, we will tolerate none. I think I can speak for the whole board on that one.
Mm-huh.
Okay, then, something special. Marisol, if you'll join me at the podium, please. Each year, um, I try to give out a couple of scholarships. This year, um, the Joseph W. Martinez Foundation Leadership Award Scholarship is going to our School Board Member, Marisol Angulo. In recognition of your outstanding scholastic achievements and excellence in leadership at school and in your community, the foundation awards a scholarship to you, Marisol. It's a $1,000 scholarship and it'll be funded July 1st.
Thank you so much, I am so grateful. Thank you, this is going to help so much. Um, oh, I might lost for words. Thank you, thank you.
Anything that the peers are good, that'll be good.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
In addition, uh, this year, we also have John Paul Abadinas, Eisenhower High School, uh, going to Cal State San Bernardino, Mechanical Engineering. And from Carter, Jennifer Rivera, 4.2 GPA, going to UC Santa Barbara Engineering as well. And these are both STEM scholarships. So every year I try to give out, uh, they're, they're $1,000 scholarships funded July 1st again, the fiscal year. That gives me time, because this time of year is just so busy. Other than that, you'd have it already funded. Thank you, President Montes.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Next we go to our Board Clerk, Ms. Dina Walker.
So I'd just like to start off with, yes, thank you and for all your service on this board and staying with us until at least nine o'clock every night. I know sometimes you're like, oh, I'm out of here. But I appreciate that your leadership, um, for your peers, um, and especially for young women as well, um, is exemplary. And we want to make sure that, you know, that you realize that this is a valuable opportunity and, and you being a role model by sitting here, um, with us. So, thank you, and, um, we'll, we'll still be talking, because, um, we've got a little something for you as well, uh, my own foundation. But to the class of 2015, um, as well, this is a, you know, June is a transition year, um, and it's, you know, the new summer and everything like that, the students are graduating from high school, going on to another part of their life. And I'm always reminded about the proverb that says, uh, where there is no vision, the people perish. And I tell my students that I work with, um, out in the community and the schools that I work in about that. They have to have a vision for themselves, uh, or otherwise you're liable to go and do any old thing, right? I want to bring that back to the work that we're doing here in the district as well. Where there is no vision, the people perish. I want to say to the, to our staff members, um, here in the district, that as a board, we are your oversight organization. We're supposed to provide you with a vision, uh, and we are on our way to doing that. Sometimes we are hitting rocky bumps because there is no vision and we're all kind of trying to carve out our own way, um, here in the district, um, and things aren't as, as good as we want them to be, um, but there's definitely an opportunity to be better. Um, and so we want to be able to continue to work together to make sure that we have that, um, a good working relationship. Again, the vision is about not only what we have as a board, um, for our district, but is what, what you all want as well. So I want you to continue to work from the unions, to the teachers, to the, um, individual staff, to the students, to work with our board to create the vision that we need to make sure the district excels in the way that we all want it to. Um, so, where there is no vision, the people perish. Remember that.
Right.
The next thing, um, just in reference to coming to the mic, uh, I am a community advocate by nature, uh, because I grew up in an advocacy family. My mother was a community advocate and helped Jesse Turner, but that was before, it was a regional hub of recreation in Fontana, when it was just the North Fontana Park in, uh, Fontana off a dirt road. Uh, but she was one of the, um, parent activists who helped to get a head start in an all-black community back in the early 70s, when there was no early childhood education for African-American students, because it was still segregated there. Um, so I, that is the, where I come from as a person. So anytime I see people that are willing to stand and just speak truth to power without fear of harassment, without fear of retaliation or anything like that, I am embodied by that and that is why we are here. So to understand that it is your duty for our community advocates, for our staff people, for our board members, for our student board members, for our elected honor partners, it is your duty to make sure that if we are going to get to the point where we are going to be excellent, we have to be able to be, have courageous conversations. Um, and sometimes it's, you can't do that in closed doors. Sometimes it has to take the public forum, so you know how you do, you're like, you can't fight the person by yourself, but you take all your friends, right? Sometimes you gotta do that, right? You're like, you couldn't dare do that if I'm here. And I understand that. Uh, I, again, I'm an advocate, I understand what that means. And so I encourage you, um, to make sure that you have your voice in a formal aspect, because remember, nothing, if it was not written down, nothing happens, right? And from the public. And so, again, I commend you all for coming to the mic and expressing and sharing with us what we need to do to help make this district great. Um, and so the last thing I just say is that it is already 9:19. I'm still awake, I'm excited, even though we have to go back in closed session. Uh, I just have had a great time this, this five, well, little more than five months as a, being a board member, and thank you for all the invitations, for the activities and the programs and everything to, to get to know people that I haven't known before. So, keep up the good work, we've got great things ahead. For those of you who did not or did follow my campaign when I ran, um, there are questions that people ask, what are you going to do when you get in there? Well, I don't know what I'm going to do, I just, could I get in there, right? But the thing that I did say was I'm going to first, as a prudent person, I'm going to first listen. The second thing, without making what we're, the second thing is that we are going to hire a superintendent. And the third thing I told the public when I was running is that we're going to create a strategic plan. Those are the only thing, three things I need to do first, period. We have already accomplished, while I'm still listening, I'm talking a lot more now, but still listening, uh, we've hired a superintendent. Uh, as of July 1st, he'll be on board if we haven't scared him away yet. Um, and then hopefully our next step will be in the strategic planning. So just to understand and just bear with us and work together until we get through that. And sometimes you can, some of you women, and I'm totally digressing, but you know, you can keep the girdle on for so long, because you know that at the end, you know, like, okay, I'll can, keep it on for this one. Hold it in until we get to that point. So, you guys, thank you for listening and have a good night. Oh, it's Spanx now, I'm sorry, I'm dating myself.
Next we go to our Vice President, Ms. Nancy O'Kelly.
Oh, well, just again, I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. And, uh, ditto what, uh, Ms. Walker said about coming to the podium and expressing yourself, and don't ever fear. The only way we know what your concerns are is if we are told, if we are notified. So, we need to hear from you. And, um, we also all have emails and whatever. Typically, what we do with most situations is we turn the issue over to the superintendent and he delegates it to the proper people. But we are here watching out for you and making sure that everything is going well in this district. Marisol, we are going to miss you dearly. This is your last meeting, right?
The next one.
Oh, okay, then I won't say, I won't say goodbye, okay. Uh, well, we, I've had an exciting week, uh, because I've attended five middle school graduations along with Mr. Martinez, and, uh, my feet have not recovered yet. Neither has my hand. I'm looking forward to Sunday, but it's so much fun and the kids get so excited and, uh, it's a big deal and it means a lot to them, so I'm glad that we do an actual eighth grade, it's not eighth grade graduation, it's eighth grade promotion, because you only graduate once and that's when you graduate from high school. Uh, also attended the Eisenhower Senior Scholarships and Awards Night. Also attended the Eisenhower Senior Scholarships and Awards Night, which those are my other favorite things to attend, where I see our deserving students get scholarships and awards for the hard work that they have put in over the last four years of high school. I used to say this as a principle, but you all really have to know, you can have a great social life and see the best entertainment in the world if you attend the school functions. You go to high school, especially high school plays, high school band concerts, high school choir concerts, you're going to have a ball and totally enjoy it, and for hardly anything to get through the door. So keep track of those events and try to attend some of them. I went to the Eisenhower Jazz Band Bands Concert, and it was amazing. Years ago, when I went back to Eisenhower, because I had been there as a teacher, but I went back as an assistant principal, and at that time, our band had completely died. It was really sad. I mean, we had like three members in it. For graduation that year, I had to call my own son, who's a musician, and some of his friends to play graduation to fill out the band. Well, Mr. Noden, who Mr. Tompkins and I hired that first year, has, in the years he's been there, done a fantastic job of building that band into something great. The kids are awesome, and it's well worth it to go hear them. And basically, I want to thank all of the teachers and administrators and staff members for another wonderful year. You put in a lot of hard work, but our kids are worth it, as Marisol represents over there for us. And this is what it's all about. This is our future, and more power to them. I want to also wish everyone a wonderful and relaxing summer. Go enjoy, refresh, and come back renewed and ready to go again. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Kelly. Last but not least, I just want to first say thank you to the RUSD family here from the Transportation Department. One of the things that concerns me is that when there's a big group of people, when there's a lot of people with the same concerns, it makes it pretty clear that it's not just one person, it's not just a small handful of people that are making allegations or, you know, just out to get someone or pick on someone. I think it's clear that there are serious issues that need to be looked at, there are serious concerns that need to be looked at with the Transportation Department. The board knows that we've gone through some changes over the recent years in regards to transportation, and we want to, we want to make sure that, just like any other department, Transportation Department gets the support from the district level, gets the support from your site level, and that, above all, that everyone is treated with respect and with the same dignity that any other employee from any other department is treated. I've already requested, and I think the board agrees, a report to be given to us from the leadership here. We want you to know that all of us believe that if you come and share your concerns, we're against anyone retaliating against that or taking disciplinary action just because you did that. I don't think anyone should be offended, anyone in the leadership, both at the site level or at the district level. I think, if anything, this is a learning experience for everyone, and it just goes to show that there's ongoing work here to be done at RUSD. We might not be, we might not be perfect in the sense that we might not be where many, many of us want to be or where other people want us to be, but I definitely agree with Ms. Walker that we're doing a lot of good things, and we're definitely heading in the right direction. So just in regards to some of the comments that were made to the board by the Transportation Department, we want you to know that we're here you loud and clear, and we want to make sure that you are being treated fairly and your concerns are looked at. So I just want to reiterate that. The other thing I did want to say was, I wanted to thank the city for the opening ceremony they recently had, I don't remember the exact date, a week or two ago, for the trails, the, is it the Claremont Trails? That runs from, all the way from here now officially, now from Rialto, all the way to Claremont or Montclair. And they had a really, I didn't, I couldn't attend the meeting, the ceremony, but I know some people that drove by and said it looked really nice. I know they've been working on that bridge, the little miniature bridge there, crossing the wash there on Cactus, and just as a matter of fact, just down the street from the Transportation Department. I think it's really beautiful, and I want to commend this board for deciding to help the city with some of that land use there for the trail to run through there. The other thing I just wanted to say, congratulations again, Marisol. We know you have another meeting to attend, but, you know, we can't thank you enough for your service, and we wish you the best, and we'll be saying more goodbyes at the next board meeting. But I do want to thank Mr. Martinez. I think that was very humble of you and a very honorable thing for you to provide scholarship to our student board member, very well deserved, and that's very nice of you. The other thing, last but not least, we're almost here. It's weird, you know, school districts, we operate the end of the year, we say the end of the year, we mean the end of the school year. People are like, what are you talking about? The end of the year is in December. But this end of the year is coming to a close. Again, I want to thank the leadership here for doing the best that they've done, and they've done really good to really help us move along, really help us move forward. They've been a big part of making the positive changes that we've been going through over the recent years, and we will continue to do and grow. And I just want to remind people, people don't change. I mean, institutions don't change. The Rialto Unified School District is not going to change the name, the district, it's the people who change. Institutions don't change, people change. So with that change, sometimes it's good, sometimes it's bad, you know? Board members change, superintendents change, employees change, students come and go, you know, but people are the ones that change, it's not the institutions. I just hope that being part of, being part of the governing body here and with all the people that we have, that, and hopefully plan on staying, that we can do the best that we can to do what's best for our district and our schools and our vital departments like transportation, because without you, a lot of those kids can't get to school. So just keep that in mind, institutions don't change, people change, you know, and it's a part, it's a part of, you know, it's a part of life, it's a part of moving forward, and we look forward to, we look forward to a new superintendent coming in and helping us in whatever way possible to really do what's best for this district. And last but not least, we need to go back into closed session and then report back out of closed session, so would anybody like, well, before that, we would just like to dismiss our student board member, because we can't adjourn the meeting, we're going to have to pause to go back into close. But would anybody still do us the honor of moving us back into closed session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Reluctantly.
Are we ever going to get one that doesn't say "draft" on it? Do we ever get the final one?
Well, they still...
Do they have to approve it at the county?
So it went, this is the revised, you know, we discussed the format.
Oh, okay, all right.
When they certify, they'll be fine. Oh, that's what I'm saying, have something official like a...
Mr. Islam, do we have a report out of closed session?
Yes, President Montez. In closed sessions, board took action that employee number 1553235 shall be released from their administrative position effective June 30, 2015, and shall be reassigned to the position of classroom teacher 184 days for the 2015-2016 school year. The roll call board was three yes, one no, one abstain. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Islam. With that, do we have a motion to adjourn closed session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned at 12:40 Thursday morning.